Say I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
For the Cottage Grove City Council?
For the Cottage Grove City Council.
For November 5th?
For November 5th.
2025.
2025.
And the next item on our agenda is pledge allegiance.
Oh, everybody stand up and say the pledge of allegiance.
We're gonna do the pledge. You wanna lead us?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so will be clerk, please do the roll.
Council member Claussen?
Here.
Council member Olson?
Here.
Council member Thede?
Here.
Council member Garza?
Here.
Mayor for a day Kinley?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. All right. And so two things real quick for the council and the audience. The first thing is just to mention that this meeting is being recorded by Truilllands Community Media. You can view city meetings live and replay them on cable channel 799. And the meetings are also streamed live and archived on the Cottage Grove YouTube channel. So if anybody's interested after the meeting, you get to go see yourself on TV.
Oh, yay.
There you go. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Cottage Grove City Council meeting. I did want to mention before we approve the agenda as it's presented, I would like to propose a modification. We have with us this evening, as noted, our special guest for a mayor for a day, which is Kinley Frankfurth, which is sitting right next to me here. And I would like to move item 6A under presentations to the front of our meeting to follow immediately. Obviously, we did roll call. And this allows us to honor our guests before we get into the main items of the business tonight. So if there is no objections from the council, we will proceed with that change, moving to item 6A, mayor for the day, and then we'll go from there. Good for that? All right, so we're gonna go down in front. Are you ready to come with?
Sure.
All right, let's go. Yeah. All right. So for the public, what's really neat about this evening is every year now, I don't know how many, we've been doing this for a while now. I know the state of Minnesota and other communities and other states actually do like a mayor for a day essay and such. Here in Cottage Grove, we've been doing mayor for a day. And we get this information, we put it out to all of our schools out there, elementary schools. And we get quite a few entries, and then staff kinda goes down and narrows it to a couple. And then they send it to me as the mayor, and I get to read through a couple of them, well, all of them, but a couple of them to make a choice. And this year, I was, I'm honored to choose Kinley here as to be the mayor for a day. The one thing that she did mention to me, we did get her to read her letter in the other room. So we did have some pizza earlier for dinner as a group. And I will just mention that she got, as part of being mayor for a day, they get to go and check out all kinds of stuff around the city. So first of all, they get picked up from school in a police car, right?
We also got to do, we rode the Zamboni, and we got free snacks at the ice arena. And I think the free snacks was definitely my favorite part.
So they got to go to the, ride, go in a fire truck and put headphones on. They got to go to Public Works and be in a couple of the loaders and the snowplow and so on. And so it's just kind of a neat opportunity to engage with our youth in the community. And so I just wanted to recognize the fact that she got to be our mayor for a day today. And so what we'd like to do is we're gonna present you with this certificate of appreciation. And it just basically says, Kinley Frankfurth, in sincere appreciation for your service to our, the city of Cottage Grove, Minnesota. And so on behalf of the rest of the council, all of our staff, and all of the citizens of Cottage Grove, let's have a round of applause for Kinley Frankfurth. Congratulations, Mayor. All right. Yeah, do you wanna take a picture? Oh, yeah. What, she, one of the things... Oh, who are you giving a shout out to?
My math teacher, Mrs. Sam. She asked me to do this, so I'm doing it.
That's awesome. Well, one, I will, that's great. Thank you for bringing that up. So what are the neat reasons that I thought it was cool as she was giving her, why she wanted to be mayor for the day? She did state one particular thing that she wants to be when she grows up. Do you wanna share with the public?
I wanna be the first girl president, but hopefully not the first, but I wanna be a president.
There we go. So we may have a future president from Cottage Grove, Minnesota in the future here, so. All right, so we'll go ahead and I'm gonna give you this too. This is your little name plate, and I'm gonna give this to mom. So she has the I love Cottage Grove pin, but I think she lost the other piece inside her jacket there. So I'm gonna give this to you, and then we can, we can go from there. All right, anything else you wanna say? All right. Well, thank you for coming and spending the day with us and our staff. They enjoyed having you as mayor for a day. And now you get to go home and have fun stuff, and we get to deal with the work. That's okay. Thank you. Thanks, Kinley. Hello, buddy. Nice job.
Thank you.
Do you want your water?
Is that where you want your water?
And you, only want this and this. There you go.
Thank you.
Did she change any street names or anything that I need to know about? Are we okay? All right.
All right. All right, so next on our agenda this evening, before we get down to presentations and adoption of the agenda, is open forum. This is the opportunity that anybody wants, that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, or something that's open to the public, if you would say, for tonight's agenda, is welcome to do so at this time. We did have a signup sheet out in the entryway. And on the signup sheet, I'm just gonna go from the top to the bottom. And if there is somebody that maybe got in here that didn't get to sign up, and they do wanna speak during open forum, you're absolutely welcome to do that. What we do is just, after I call the names down the list, just go up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes, and Tammy will be good about making sure that, you know, if you, if you're gonna run long, she's gonna let you know. So we do need to hold it to three minutes. All right, so the first one here on open forum is Bobby Tannhill? Yep.
Okay, hi. My name is Bobby Tannhill. I live at 8215 Ingberg Trail South. I've been living in the Cottage Grove area for 55 years, living and working in this community. My husband was a naturalized citizen of the United States, and he became the first band director of Woodbury High School, and he was handpicked by the administration there for his job. He was the first teacher to be awarded the Teacher of the Year. He was the grand marshal at Homecoming Parade. And my immigrant husband gave back to this community in countless ways. I am a product of my immigrant grandparents. Some came from Norway, some from Germany, Poland, or Ireland. You could say I'm a Heinz 57, like many of you. We are all descendants of immigrants who came with talents, aspirations, hopes, dreams, and grit. They are what really made America great. There was no masked ICE agents like now disappearing people. There were no armed ICE agents at their immigration hearings. The immigrants were not being sent to foreign prisons or removing them at gunpoint to places that were not their home. These things are happening now because of ICE agenda. Things have changed. We need ICE agents. I bet that's my phone. But we need a humane ICE agency. The Hero Center is funded in part by taxes from Cottage Grove and Woodbury through taxation. I am opposed to ICE as it is now, coming into my town and using my facility to sharpen their shooting skills. It is against my values, and I do not want to spend my money on something that I morally object to. Please, please, do not renew the ICE contract at the Hero Center. Thank you, and thank you for your time, for listening, and for your thoughtful thoughts on this matter. Thank you.
All right, the one that ran out with the phone. The one that ran out with the phone, had my mic off. Diane Frederiksen, if you wanna come up?
I was timing my speech. You're supposed to walk in three minutes a long time ago. Hi, I'm Diane Frederiksen, and I have been a Cottage Grove resident for only 45 years, not 55. I live in River Acres neighborhood, and my husband and I have raised two children here. I worked in 833. I was a teacher, reading specialist, the curriculum coordinator for reading and writing, and volunteered here. I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission, the historical preservation. I was, I am a master gardener, campfire leader. I do lots of volunteer work at All Saints. So we really love living in Cottage Grove and feel like this is a really good place to live. But I've never come before the council. Tonight, I have two things I wish to say to you. One is, I live in River Acres, and it's a beautiful, peaceful, quiet river neighborhood, right on the river. It's a friendly and stable neighborhood, and I'm asking that they not be permitted to build a backwater mine there. Cottage Grove has this little tiny piece that they own on the river, and it's such a small presence. You're building a brand-new neighborhood there for Pete's sake. Why would you build a mine next to it when you're trying to say it's a beautiful place to be? Secondly, I oppose the city renting to ICE. We rent the Hero Center to ICE for their gun, the gun range for them. ICE might have had some things that they did that were positive in keeping criminals under control, but ICE is out of control. Do you know your brown neighborhoods, your brown neighbors, brothers and sisters, and those with Latino names are hiding? They're afraid to come out. They're afraid they'll be nabbed when they go to school to have conferences with their kids, when they go to the grocery store. They're afraid, they're afraid. They live in fear. We shouldn't have our neighbors living in fear. We can't have the presence of ICE in Cottage Grove. So I ask you to keep ICE out of Cottage Grove, and when the contract comes up the next time, to please consider not signing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. All right, and then next that's on the list here is, I believe it's Belinda, Belinda Lewis? Did you wanna speak?
She had to leave.
Oh, she had to leave. Okay, I'm sorry. All right. How about Sue Chamberlain?
Good evening. My name is Sue Chamberlain, and I live at 8151 River Acres Road in Cottage Grove. All of us living in Cottage Grove should consider ourselves blessed to be living near such a magnificent national treasure and federally protected Mississippi River. Unfortunately, the Mississippi is also the number-one endangered river in America. To even consider allowing a mining company to mine 200 feet down into the Mississippi over vast acres of protected wetlands is, in my opinion, unconscionable. Tonight, the council must vote yea or nay to accept this EIS report as a satisfactory report of what potential impacts mining could have on the Mississippi River. I ask you, as the governing unit responsible, to vote no on the acceptance of this incomplete report. The council must request and insist on more detailed research in several areas. For example, impact of underwater noise and immense vibrations created by the mining on the aquatic life and in turn the surrounding wildlife. This area of study is nowhere to be found in the AIS report, yet it can have a major impact on the wildlife of the river. It only references noise issues above the water, not underneath the water. The constant drone of underwater mining 24/7 could potentially be as loud as a jet engine and travel miles under the water, possibly creating a complete dead zone of the river. Where's the critical detail on the berm construction and impact on river flow and erosion? They state that it's to be further determined during the state and federal permitting process. That huge unknown should not be acceptable to Cottage Grove. This is the only EIS study, and it's very lacking. What about restorations for the destroyed wetlands? Where's the financially secured funding that this company will provide for the reclamation at the end of the life of this mine in 20 to 25 years? How much will it cost then? What if they refuse to pay, or they're no longer in business? What about the funding for liability claims or natural resource damage that might happen during mining? What if some downriver city is detrimentally impacted and decides to sue the city of Cottage Grove or the state of Minnesota for allowing this mining operation? All of this information is thoroughly lacking in the EIS study. Please do not accept the EIS report in its current format and vote no. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sue. All right, and the last one that was signed up is Bonnie Madder?
Thank you.
Yep.
Bonnie Madder, 6649 in Skip Avenue South, Cottage Grove, Minnesota. What I, what I wanna say is, I oppose, this is gonna be short. I oppose the wholesome Amrise-Nelson Backwaters project in the Mississippi River riverbed. There is no new information in the updated final environmental impact statement that changes any of the concerns outlined in my January 16, 2025 letter relating to the draft environmental impact statement. The updated final EIS just confirms my reasons for why this project should not move forward. Please keep mining out of the Mississippi River, the Mississippi River bed, the surface waters, the aquifers, the wetlands, and the groundwater. This is an ecosystem. And for the public, I just suggest that they go out to the city of Cottage Grove website and read the comments in the, in the draft EIS, and then also the final comments that came back after the Minnesota EQB posting. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Okay, that was whoever signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Yeah, so we'll start with this gentleman here. And again, just name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Whitney Clark. I'm the executive director of Friends of the Mississippi River, 106, 106 West Water Street in St. Paul, Minnesota. I'd like to add my comments to those of neighbors tonight and dozens of comments that have been received by the city regarding the council's planned vote today on the environmental impact statement for Amrise's proposed expansion of the Nelson Mine on Gray Cloud Island. The EIS is deeply flawed and should not be approved. The proposed project is not legal. City and state regulations ban mining in shoreline areas within the Mississippi River corridor critical area. The city claims those rules somehow don't apply to the Nelson Mine, but they do. The city's own shoreline mining ban very clearly applies to expansions of existing mines such as this one. The language in the city's ordinance is clear. The city claims that the mine has legal nonconforming or grandfather rights that allow it nearly unlimited expansion, but that's also rooted in flawed legal analysis. Nonconforming use rights do not apply to a public waterway like the Mississippi River. The Minnesota DNR, the National Park Service, Friends of the Mississippi River, and other parties have all pointed out these legal issues. It's illegal to approve an EIS with such serious factual inaccuracies. Cottage Grove's insistence on pressing forward regardless of the facts could result in legal challenges that will cost the city and its residents for years to come. In addition to this proposed, in addition, this proposed mine will damage wetlands, muscle beds, and rare plant communities. It will reduce backwater access for boaters, hunters, and anglers. It will add noise and visual pollution to local parks and neighborhoods, and all of that harm will go on for decades. I also wanna share our concern about how little effort the city and Amrise have made to engage Dakota tribal nations in this project. Gray Cloud Island was a significant Dakota village site and has numerous burial mounds. Mining has already done a lot of damage to these mounds, but the city hasn't made any real effort to talk with the tribal nations about protecting what remains. Why is the city so insistent that this illegal mining proposal must move forward? Why is the city ignoring input from so many other government agencies, including the Metropolitan Council, the DNR, the National Park Service, the Army Corps, Prairie Island Indian Community, Shakopee Midwakka and Sioux Community, and others? Cottage Grove is ignoring the law in favor of one corporate tenant's interests, and I urge you to halt the EIS approval process until the document accurately reflects the damage this project will cause and the legal issues associated with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I think there was another gentleman? Yes.
Good evening, council. My name is Tom Drued. I live at 8005 River Acres Road. And pardon me if my dentures are slipping. I just would be echoing so many statements that I've heard tonight and read online, and I hope that you've read all the things that are online. And it tells me that Cottage Grove is not standing alone in this issue. What I'd simply like to say is that it may not occur to you that this might be the biggest decision that you've ever encountered sitting on this council, maybe any council for Cottage Grove. The ramifications are unbelievable. But on the better side of things, what I've noticed in the last few years with the development of the Mississippi Dunes area and now this project, that suddenly Cottage Grove is recognizing that we have the Mississippi River flowing through our community. We happen to have the most shoreline of any major city on the whole of the Mississippi River. This is our, our gift from God. The place is unbelievable. If you haven't been there, get there. Fish there, kayak there. See, this morning I woke up, I had an eagle in my front yard, 20 feet away from me. What's gonna happen? You know, you could make a real easy decision, I call it the Pontius Pilate decision, and just go ahead and approve this. Or you could do maybe the more courageous decision and send it back and say, until you answer all the questions that have been presented by the public, by state, local, national people about the issues here that have been voiced by others, but most... Did I mention that I've lived in River Acres for 51 years? So I think I beat out somebody. Anyhow, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, was there anybody else that would like to speak on this topic? Yes.
My name is Sandy Katuria, and I live at 8077 River Acres Road. And I just, I don't have anything new to say other than what everyone else said. I just wanna kinda echo that and let you know that there are, I see several other of my neighbors here, so we're just all on the same page. And one extra impact, other than all of these other things, our house faces what literally would be a half a mile from this new proposed site. I don't know about any of our neighbors, but most of our neighbors don't have even shades on that side because we like to watch the stars and the moon and just over the river every night. And that would change to a big light from a mine and a bunch of noise and not being able to open our windows. So in addition to all of the environmental things, there is also the light pollution and noise pollution as well, so. And the other thing I'd like to say, I didn't know that there was an issue with an ICE, ICE being trained here. I don't know anything about it, other than I would like to say respectfully, I, I don't see a problem with them being trained here. I respect law enforcement and... But again, I don't know the issues. I just want you to know that I do respect that and support them, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes.
My name's Dick Pult. I live down in Gray Cloud Township. The only thing I wanna remind the council is, years ago, the city already approved, back then, the Shealy Company of mining farther on Gray Cloud Island. When they were moving from the west end of that island to the east end, they had to come to the council to get the land rezoned. Okay. So you already gifted them years ago, the other half of the island, it didn't have the right to give. I mean, you don't have to keep giving and giving and giving to them. They were given a real good gift, 'cause you probably gave them more than half the land they've already mined before. So saying no, I mean, they can't say the council's been nasty to us all along, 'cause you've given them what they already got. I think enough is enough. The communities around here have given plenty. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Dick. All right, anybody else? All right, I'm gonna go ahead then and close the open forum, and we'll just continue at this moment with the meeting until we get to consent, and then I'll mention a couple of things there. So the next thing on our agenda then is approval of the agenda as we spoke earlier. We have a motion by council member Olson, second by council member Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, so now, next, since we did the mayor for a day earlier, we're gonna move to B, which is under presentations, which is the Cottage Grove Lions Club Fitness Equipment Donation. And our Director of Public Safety, Pete Kerner, is going to start us through this one, so welcome, Pete.
Well, thank you, Honorable Mayor and council. As you're aware, about a month ago, you already, you accepted the official donation. And I'm just gonna give a short update on this and where we're at with it. And on the slide, we actually have a picture of what was purchased with the donation, but... And last summer, in August of 2025, we had the Hometown Heroes Golf fundraiser, and that was sponsored by the Cottage Grove Lions. They worked in partnership with our local VFW and the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Organization and numerous public safety staff. They did really well for the first year of doing this. And with that, they've kinda reached out to public safety in that, you know, obviously with some different veterans groups with donations. groups with donations. And one area that has been really a primary focus with Cottage Grove Public Safety is employee wellness and fitness, and that's just not for our staff within the Police Department. It's also city staff. We have a wellness group. Our city clerk, Tammy Anderson, is one of those members. Captain Brad Peterson is a member of that, and one of them is, we have this great fitness center here, a lot of equipment, and it's been here since October of 2012, and some of the stuff was getting tired, and it was just kind of a time to revamp. So with that, we would like to have some of our local Lions members come up and do the big check. On the slide, it shows what was purchased, and we also just updated our plaque here, too, that we hang in the fitness center, and our first one was Cottage Grove Lions, Cottage Grove Crime Prevention and the Association, and now we have the Lions again. So with that, now they're starting to, come on up, guys, gals. John, I can trust you with the check. I signed Ron Williams' name on it, so we might have, that was pretty good, wasn't it? Yeah, so John, can you pass that down then, too, and we'll get a?
I would just say it's an honor as a part of the Lions Club to partner with Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and the VFW to support our public safety members and their wellness, and we're happy to be a part of the community and appreciate everything that you guys do.
We appreciate you guys, thank you.
And I guess I'll just, I'll just mention, and I know on the other side of me here is the current president still, right?
Unless I gotta impeach him.
Oh, did you impeach him yet? No. The current president of the Cottage Grove Lions Club, and, you know, this is, to be honest with you, this is a small piece of a lot of things that the Lions Club does for the city of Cottage Grove and its residents, and whether it's donating equipment to support our public safety department and others within the community, or others within the staff, I should say, or fire equipment, or park buildings, or, I mean, I could just keep going with all the different things that you guys do, and I just want to say thank you because you truly do make Cottage Grove an amazing place to live and work and play with a lot of the stuff dealing with the play, with the things that we like to do with the Lions, and I just wanted again to say thank you, once again, on behalf of myself and the staff and I, and the council, and with the many people that we have in the room tonight, which is neat to see, why don't we just give the Lions Club a round of applause, please? And if I'm, if I'm understanding right, this is gonna go up into?
Back in the fitness room.
Yeah, in the fitness room with the information on the plaque that shows the people that donated it. So with that, I want to, did you get a picture or do you need a picture?
Okay.
You guys go back in there? You wanna stand on the chair?
No, I'm good, thanks, Justin.
Thanks, Mike. I gotta put it back. Yeah. I don't see anything. Sounds good, John, thank you.
All right. Just another of the many donations they do. Thank you, Councilmember Olson, for your leadership on that great, great committee and group. So the final thing under Presentations this evening is a proclamation, and it's Native American Heritage Month, and I did ask Councilmember, oh, actually, Councilmember Garza, right? Yeah, Councilmember Garza to actually read the proclamation, and when she's done, we'll go ahead and look for a motion in a second, so kick it off to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, November 2025. Whereas the era known, the area known today as Minnesota is located on ancestral and contemporary lands that have been, that have been called home by indigenous peoples since time immemorial, and whereas Minnesota is home to 11 tribal nations and a resilient and robust Native American community. And Native Americans have made essential contributions to the history, culture, and economy in Minnesota, including traditional knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, industries, and arts. And the Dakota and Ojibwe reside, resided on this land prior to the arrival of European settlers and experienced a history of interactions with Europeans and European-American settlers that were defined by broken promises, violence, deprivation, and disease. And this history that we must reconcile as we actively promote practices and policies to address longstanding inequities and disparities that exist and work to eliminate systematic racism and discrimination towards indigenous people. And during Native American History Month, the city of Cottage Grove honors the vibrant and diverse national or Native American cultures that form part of Minnesota today by renewing our commitment to government-to-government relationships and promoting appreciation, reconciliation, understanding, friendship, and continued partnerships among all Minnesotans and the native people of this land. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month, passed this fifth day of November 5th by the mayor.
All right, so Councilmember Garza, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I would love to make the motion to declare November 20, November as the, as the Native American Heritage Month. I should have pre-read this, sorry, y'all.
It's a little tongue twister there for you.
It is.
So we got a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again for reading that. All right, now we're gonna move on to number seven, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there anything council would like to poll on consent? I am gonna poll S, since we have a lot of people that spoke on the MRIS National Mine, or Nelson Mine, and I've got a statement that I was gonna read. Is there anything else that council would like? And I'm just gonna poll to read, and then we can go from there. Nothing else? Okay. All right, so what I thought I would share with the public is just some information that we have from a city's perspective. So the resolution before the city council this evening is a determination of adequacy for the MRIS National Backwaters Mine Project Environmental Impact Statement, or as it's called, EIS. I first wanted to start off by thanking residents here and in surrounding communities for participating in this process. The city of Cottage Grove takes a role in the EIS process very seriously, and it's important to note what that role is. The city's narrow role here is to gather the potential impacts of this proposed project to inform permitting decisions made by other agencies, and we did just that. Next in the process, this proposed project would move on to permitting, where the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers will make decisions about the proposed project based on this information. This action tonight does not permit the project. It is, it is specific to the adequacy determination of the final EIS and would not permit the project or allow for the applicant to take action on this proposed project. The purpose of an EIS is to compile the potential impacts of the actions of the proposed project and to inform the work and decisions of the permitting agencies. Over the course of three-plus years, the city, since day one, has taken a role as the responsible government unit to gather potential impacts very seriously. The city assembled a technical advisory committee inclusive of the Friends of the Mississippi, DNR, Army Corps of Engineers, Washington County, the tribal nations, among others. You, as the community, have expressed your concerns, and we have heard those concerns, and obviously we heard them again tonight. In addition to the technical advisory committee, the city has spent the past three years working with specialists and experts in their field, including hydrologists, biologists, archaeologists, ecologists, noise specialists, geologists, a lot of them here, and engineers, just to name a few. We now have a 1,000-page document that is comprised of over 100 of your comments and concerns that will be a reference for agencies such as the DNR, Army Corps of Engineers, and the tribal nations to inform their decision around permitting of the proposed project. Our role was to gather the potential impacts of this proposed project, and we did just that. Permitting agencies, including the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers, are responsible to refer to and expand upon the identified potential impact that was outlined in the EIS. These permitting agencies will consider mitigation measures and conduct further environmental analysis as part of the permitting process. The action before us this evening is to deem that the final EIS is adequate to inform the permitting agencies as they make their decisions. So I just wanted to kind of give an idea of what that, what that is. So we are not, just to be very clear again, we are not voting to approve the mining project in the backwaters of the Mississippi. Yes, Councilmember Thede?
Just for clarification, does this come back to the council at any time before they're allowed to actually mine that area?
Mayor, members of the council, it's a very complex process. What we have undertaken is a Minnesota process for environmental. The federal process has not undertaken by the Army Corps of Engineers, so there's an environmental federally NIPA process that would have to take place, so that would be another step. And also, when we look at the permitting, the DNR would have to do that extensive work and the Army Corps of Engineers. So the city of Cottage Grove will not see this again for quite some time. We would be last for any permitting activity.
But we will see it again before they're allowed to mine the area. What we'll see, we'll have an opportunity to?
We would be the last permitting entity to see this.
Okay.
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions on this topic?
I don't have any questions, though.
Okay. So then, at this point, I just polled it to read a statement and then allow any council members to make any comments or ask questions at this point. So if there is no other items that need to be discussed or polled on consent?
Move consent.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember McClosson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. So if you are here for anything that is on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. All right, we'll move to number eight, which is approved dispersment. Eight A is to pay the bills.
A move to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second? By Councilmember Thede. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Nine is public hearings. We have none this evening. Bit awards, we have none this evening, which is 10. Regular agenda, we do have one item this evening. Item A is site plan review for proposed addition to Gray Cloud Elementary, and Max Erickson, our planner, is gonna walk us through this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Como Architects, on behalf of School District 833, have applied for a site plan review for Gray Cloud Elementary. As you are aware, the school is located off of Indian Boulevard South. It shares a parcel with Cottage Grove Middle School. The parcel zone R3 schools are allowed as a condition of use in the R3 zone. Gray Cloud Elementary was approved in 1990 under a CUP. The proposal before you is, in anticipation for future increase in the student body, they propose to add two additions to the school, one being gymnasium, the other being classroom block. They also propose to make various site improvements, such as the removal of a driveline parking area. They're planning on relocating a playground, and then they're adding a new stormwater. The site is currently accessed off of Indian Boulevard South by two accesses. Nothing is changing with these accesses. They're planning on removing a driveline. Staff have observed traffic during the school hours. There are no issues that have, that staff have observed with traffic. They're planning on removing park, 10 parking stalls on the north corner of the school. The site currently well exceeds the parking standards requirements of city code. The removal of these parking stalls will not change that. Proposed architectural materials will meet city code. Majority of the materials will be comprised of brick, prefab, concrete, slab, and glass. As seen on the image on the bottom left are the proposed materials against the existing building material, and so it will match the color palette as is. The applicants have also proposed to add some lighting on the gymnasium addition. This will also meet city code, and it will be downer facing, and light will not leave the site. Minimal site impact will occur for the existing landscaping. They do plan on removing some trees. No mitigation is required based on the number of trees and the size of the site. They are required to plant various trees and shrubs based on the impact of the limited new construction. They propose to add a new stormwater feature, new stormwater pond in the north part of the parking lot. The existing stormwater on site was constructed in the 1990s under 1990 standards, and this will treat current, it will treat the current impervious as well as the proposed impervious surface under current stormwater standards. The applicants propose a new sewer connection to a public node on Indian Boulevard. The classroom addition will have bathrooms, and plumbing code makes it a challenge to connect the existing sewer node on site. This will require a right-of-way permit with the city for any work that they do in Indian Boulevard. Slight alterations on a couple of fire hydrants on site. With all projects that have hydrants, the city has worked with the applicant to come up with an excess easement so the city can continue to maintain, maintain those hydrants and service them in the future. There is an existing drainage and utility easement in a stormwater pond on the northwest corner on property line. The original easement does not currently match the existing stormwater pond, and so an amendment to this easement has been worked on with the applicant to encompass the entire, entirety of that stormwater feature. The stormwater pond treats city, or treats public water as well as private water. And before, I leave a recommendation for you.
Okay.
And I also have the applicants and the representatives of the school district.
Fantastic. So, Council, first of all, is there any questions that you'd like for Max? Okay, how about the applicant? Any concerns or anything with the applicant, like to speak at all, or? This is like, well, how many for us now? I know it's different schools, but kind of the same thing. All right, so seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Olson.
This is for the applicant, just because I know you don't want to. Parking, we've discussed it several times as you're in the midst of several of these types of projects, and I know that on occasion, when you do these, you have to reconfigure the parking lot and manage parking spaces, et cetera, and it sounds like you don't have really any concerns that you're gonna lose significant amount of capacity or anything like that, but out of curiosity, with all the various events that go on in the community near Gray Cloud Elementary, as an example, Strawberry Fest, as an example, the Food Truck Festival, et cetera, is there gonna be any concern on the part of the school district? on the part of the school district when it comes to the public continuing to utilize parking at Gray Cloud for some of the overflow from these events? Do you guys have any concerns, or is there any sort of conversation going on about that, or do you think it'll just be business as usual?
Yeah, I would come up there so the public can hear you. Thank you.
Almost.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Kyle Uker, Director of Facilities for the school district. Actually, Zach Doctor just sent me an email on that the other day.
Funny how that works.
So, yeah, so we actually just started preparing a long list. He had about six points on his email. We don't really see much of an impact to those things. You know, there's some questions about, you know, using Gray Cloud gym as the storm shelter in case of...
I was going to ask that next, so he beat me to it. Mm-hmm.
Zach's got it covered.
Yeah, okay.
So, we are looking at all that stuff. Excuse me, I should have spit my gum out. I didn't plan on speaking. Public speaking faux pas 101 right there. So, yeah, working with those guys on that, I don't think we're going to have major impact in terms of parking. We're going to try and leave the bus lane, bus parking, open as much as possible because we know they also have the U-10 National Softball Tournament.
You're totally in my head right now.
Yeah, so we're...
That's perfect, good.
Well, we realize, you know, the public loves to use the space. It's a great space, so we're trying to work in conjunction with everybody that's trying to use the space at the same time.
And as long as Zach's on it, then I'm good. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No, any other questions, counsel?
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Justin kind of covered the...
Yeah, I think you did.
All right, with that, counsel, if you noticed on the screen, I believe there is four different items. Somebody wants to take number one, and then we'll kind of work our way.
Start, Doc.
Yep, go ahead.
I'll move through DAP Resolution 2025-162, approving the site plan review of an approximate 3,476-square-foot classroom addition and approximate 6,505-square-foot gymnasium addition and reworking of the site stormwater and parking lots at Gray Cloud Elementary School located at 9525 Indian Boulevard South.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember McClosson, second by Councilmember Olson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number two?
I move that we approve the amended permanent drainage and utility easement.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Thede. Again, any questions, counsel? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number three?
I would move to approve the hydrant access agreement with Independent School District 833, which allows the city access to the site's fire hydrants.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Garza. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And last but not least...
I can handle this one. I move to approve the stormwater maintenance agreement with Independent School District 833 for the proposed stormwater pond.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember McClosson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There you go. On to the next project, right?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, now we're down to 12, which is council comments and requests. I will start with, as normal, with Councilmember McClosson.
Mayor, nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Nothing, okay. Sounds good. Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that we approved on our consent this evening was a gambling permit for the Mississippi River Valley Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network team, which I'm very proud to be part of. First, let me say congratulations to that team for being named the Nonprofit of the Year by the Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce this year. They were very, very grateful for the honor, and this comes on top of being named Volunteer Organization of the Year by the city of Cottage Grove at our volunteer banquet. So it's been a good year for Mississippi River Valley Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. We want to continue that. For those who don't know, November is Military Appreciation Month, and next week, Monday, November the 11th, is the Veterans Day celebration that we do nationally in the United States of America. Our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network team is always working to support military families and veterans, but it gets particularly focused during the holiday season because we have every year, you know, dozens and dozens of families in need at the holidays due to having family members who are deployed. You know, there may be situations where somebody's dealing with PTSD or some other related illness that comes from their military service. And so what we do is we partner with the Cottage Grove Lions. You'll all notice I have my Lions shirt on tonight. And we do adopt a family where we shop for these families in need with the Lions Club. And then we all go back to the VFW and we wrap all the gifts. We shop at Target. Target's always treated us very, very well. You know, they give us dedicated shopping lanes, et cetera. And, you know, generally speaking, we spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $12,000 a year just at the holidays to make sure that every family that's in need that comes our way, and sometimes they're even outside our network area, they don't get turned away. We also support the veterans who live in our retirement communities here in the city of Cottage Grove to make sure that they also get gifts at the holidays that recognizes their contribution through their service to their fellow residents and fellow Americans. One of the ways we do that is we fundraise, and we fundraise all year long. You saw the results of some of that fundraising earlier this evening, where we had our Hometown Heroes Golf Tournament. We were able to raise some money in partnership with the Lions Club and the VFW. And, you know, we try to use those funds to their best and highest use or purpose. And at the holidays, as I stated earlier, that purpose is to support military families and veterans. If you'd like to help us with that, we approved a gambling permit earlier this evening for what we call our Hometown Helpers or Holiday Helpers raffle tickets, okay? We started this program last year with the help of our Lions Club. It's modeled on the big-ticket raffle that we do through the Lions Club. Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network members, including myself, we sell these tickets for $100 apiece, and there's only 100 tickets. That's all we sell. All of the prizes are cash prizes, and one ticket can win multiple times. Every winning ticket goes back into the hopper for the next drawing. And again, there's only 100 tickets. So the top prize here is $1,500, and the prizes range from, we have 10 prizes, $1,500 all the way down to $150 for your $100 ticket. And again, you can win multiple times. So if you'd like to help us out by supporting Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, please reach out to any of us, myself, Captain Peterson is our vice president, Sergeant Nickel is our president. We also have a number of community members, including Mary Dingle from St. Paul Park, Matt Jordan here from the city of Cottage Grove, and so on. We're happy to deliver these to you. I'll tell you right now, we're down to our last 25 tickets. That's it. They'll be gone, they're gone. The drawing takes place on December the 6th at the VFW, and again, we'd love to sell you one. You just got to reach out to us. So wanted to encourage everybody to help the helpers, and don't forget, from the 4th through the 11th, in honor of veterans and military families, it is Operation Greenlight. That's a national endeavor that we do. You can put a green light bulb out on your porch light or by your garage, and that's a very simple way to say we support our military veterans and we thank them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Thede.
I guess I've got one item, or I'll let you take the other one, but one item tonight. At our Strawberry Fest committee meeting Monday night, we actually had, you know, we had solicited themes from people to turn those in and button designs and so forth, and we chose one out of six entries that were made, and I'm not going to tell you what it is, but watch for social media and for the announcement and seeing what the Strawberry Fest theme and button is going to be for next year, so...
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Garza?
Well, I don't really have much. I lost my paper, but I noticed that the holiday train wasn't mentioned on here.
I have that.
Okay, I was wondering, like, okay, I didn't see that. But there's a lot of events that are coming up in the next month or two. During the month of November, as well as December, we have a Holidays Lights Tour that's happening on Friday, November 14th. So that will be a lot of fun to go around town and see everyone's holiday lights that will start. There's a Makers Market at River Oaks on November 8th, so that's this weekend coming up, so that'll be a lot of fun. And I just wanted to mention what, a little bit piggybacking off of what Justin had said, there's a lot going on in our communities, and our local food banks would love the support of our communities. So if you are able to support the local food banks, I think that would be a really amazing thing to do, and it would help some people in our community, it'd help a lot of families. So if you're able to, I would say, support them if you're able, if you can. And with that, I'll give it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, I'm going to have you just do it. I'm going to throw it back to Councilmember Olson real quick. I've tried to read his writing.
I forgot something, and I apologize for this. As councilperson Garza said, there's a lot going on, and sometimes I can't keep it all straight. To also celebrate November being Military Appreciation Month, the Minnesota Asian-American and Pacific Islander Group, who spoke at Memorial Day this year here in the city of Cottage Grove, are holding their annual ball in Oakdale on November the 8th. And again, this is to support Asian-American and Pacific Islander military veterans and active-duty soldiers. I'm very grateful to be able to attend this, looking forward to it very much, but if you would like to support the Asian-American and Pacific Islander military veterans as well, feel free. This is open to the public. You don't have to be a member of the military to attend the ball. You can certainly reach out to me or anybody else, part of our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Network, and we will give you all the information. I want to personally thank John B. Yang, who was one of our speakers at Memorial Day this year, for his gracious invitation, and really looking forward. This will be at the Prom Center. I believe it starts at 4:00 PM on the 8th. But if you'd like to attend, just let me know, and I'll get you in touch with the right people. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, just a couple additional items to share with you. First of all, Councilmember Olson mentioned this last week, we had the opportunity to experience, I'll say, the Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce, and what they do at the Chamber of Commerce is every year they have like a banquet, and they celebrate and recognize businesses and such. And one of the, Councilmember Olson mentioned, one with regards to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon that was recognized as the Volunteer Group of the Year. What was interesting to me and pretty cool is River Oaks Golf Course was recognized as a Small Business of the Year, and the city of Cottage Grove was recognized as a Large Business of the Year, so talk about it like a clean sweep.
That was great.
So it was very cool to see that. It was great to see a lot of our staff and people that were able to be there to glow in that opportunity there. So I just want to say congratulations to our staff and our citizens and the council and that for all of that that happened in all of those cases, whether it's River Oaks supporting the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon or the city as a whole. Councilmember Garza was mentioning the Holiday Lights Tour. The one thing I did want to mention real quick is registration is beginning actually on Friday, November 14th, and so you can register online to have your home on the tour. And the mats will be available beginning on November 26th, because I was going to notice when you said that my stuff will not be done by the time the 14th rolls around. And then entries can still be added to the list, if you will, through December 15th. So if you're one of those latecomers and trying to get stuff up, depending on how the weather's going, feel free to do that. It's a great opportunity for that. And then also, just looking ahead here, so you can put it on your calendars, a hometown holiday celebration will be December 4th here at City Hall from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. You can have photos with Santa, Mrs. Claus. There's going to be wagon rides, games, food trucks. There'll be inflatables, there'll be reindeer and all that out here. We've been doing this for a few years now. It gets bigger and better every year, so like a holiday tradition you can do here in the community of Cottage Grove. And I don't have the date yet about the, for the Lions Club Santa breakfast, but I do know River Oaks also has a Santa breakfast, which will be on December 21st from 9:00 AM to 12:00. Adults are $25, kids 6 through 12 is 18, and then kids under 6 are free. And you do sign up online, and I will tell you, the spots go fast because it is pretty cool to take the sleigh ride, if you will, around the golf course. It's a great event, and I know that usually the week or so before...
December 14th, I believe, is our date, but I will confirm that and share it the next council meeting.
And then bring that to the next meeting. That would be perfect, because both events are very well-attended, and they're both different, so it's kind of cool to take the kids or grandkids, in my case, to those events. And then, final thing, which was Councilmember Garza was commenting about, so once again this year, the CPKC holiday train will be arriving back here in Cottage Grove. It'll be arriving, which is great news, on Saturday, December 13th. The train will be arriving on West Point Douglas Road around 5:15, though the event as a whole runs from 3:30 to 6:30, because there's other things to do at the event. There's food trucks and music and so on. And again, the goal this year, I asked this at the chamber event last week, the goal this year is actually to raise $125,000 for the Friends in Need Food Shelf. And as we've all been hearing about what's going on in the nation with the government shutdown and SNAP benefits and that, as was mentioned by Councilmember Garza, if there's an opportunity for you to help your fellow neighbors out there, and whether it's providing items, specific items, matter of fact, they mentioned they prefer cash, which obviously they're going to buy a lot with cash, but personal care items are real important. So if you're a local business or something, or you want to, you know, capture that stuff and bring it down there, there's opportunities for you to actually drop off sites there, or literally we'll all take it down to the Friends in Need Food Shelf, which is in St. Paul Park. So again, it is Saturday, December 13th. Train arrives at 5:15. There's plenty of space to park. There'll be wagon rides to get from the parking lot down to where the event is. We are one of the largest events in the United States, literally, and we've raised more money than any other stop in the United States for the Friends in Need Food Shelf. So we have a lot to be proud of, and let's support our local neighbors, okay? All right, that was it for me on my topics. So just for the public, we do have two, we do have a workshop this evening, which is open to the public. We have two items on the workshop. One is mobile food licensing and fee structure, and the second one is 80th Street and East Point Douglas Rehabilitation Project. These are both workshops that will be in the training room. They are open to the public, so if anybody wants to come in and sit in and listen, they're welcome to do so. We do not have any workshops that are closed to the public, so we won't be adjourning in here. We will be adjourning in the training room. So everybody have a great Wednesday evening, and take care.